I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved. I'll second.
Seconded by Mike.
Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next item is approval of minutes from November 6th, 2019.
So moved. Seconded.
Any changes, errors, omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. And the next is special meeting of November 19, 2019.
So moved. Seconded.
Seconded by Ralph. Any changes, errors, omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Under Communications and Correspondence, we have Bernice Ampano, who's the chairperson of our Park and Rec Commission, as well as Nate Foley. And I think we also have some other members of the Park and Rec Commission, Karen Zier, Agalati, and other interested folks. So I thought what I would do is have you present some information to us under Communications and Correspondence, and then the selectmen can talk about it in a few minutes on our agenda. So if you're ready to present, we do have the handouts. Welcome.
Good evening to all of you. I'm Bernice Ampano, chairperson representing the Parks and Recreation Commission. Tonight, the Park and Recreation Commission is here to present updated park pavilion rental forms and updated sports fields usage forms to the Board of Selectmen for review and approval. Here's some background information for you guys to know of why these updates were necessary. One of them is the increased interest in the park pavilion rentals at the Riverfront Park, as well as new attractions at the pavilion facilities become available. With the launching of the Route 17 Sports and Recreation Complex has prompted our Park and Recreation Commission staff and staff to review the current policies and procedures. We found that our current forms required more consistency, an updated format, clear policies and protocols, and to be more user-friendly for renters and for staff. These new forms provide consistency both in language and format throughout the parks and recreation rental and usage forms for all facilities, for both parks and for fields, as well as clear concise language of policies and protocols. Since the launch of the new Route 17 Sports and Recreation Complex with additional new features is on the horizon, it's important for proper protocols, policies, procedures, and expectations to be established. These forms will set standards for all, our renters, our town of Portland Parks and Recreation staff, as well as our town in Portland public work staff. These forms address these updates clearly and appropriately, and these new updated forms are designed to be more user-friendly and easier to access online. Already, we've had private, non-Portland entities outside of our community inquire about field usage, especially for the new fields at the Route 17 complex for tournaments during the weekends. As the Park and Recreation Commission, we feel very strongly that our charge is to ensure the priority to Portland citizens and Portland entities, and therefore protect the interests and the investments that the town of Portland has already made on these parks and these fields. These policies were established to keep our Portland citizen a priority in enjoyment and usage of these facilities. These new updated forms reflect current market value as seen in surrounding communities, as our two-year research has indicated. These updates are keeping in line with new and existing park and recreation features offered at all of our Portland Park and Recreation facilities. The Park and Recreation Commission appreciates your consideration and requests your support for these updated forms, and our intention is to launch these forms January 1st, 2020, for use for the upcoming year. Thank you very much. And I now would like to call on Nate Foley. Nate is our Parks and Recreation Director, and he has been instrumental in developing these forms for use. He will detail some information as to why it is necessary to update the language, format, and procedures. And since there's been an upswing in the Riverfront Park Pavilion rentals, Nate can outline experiences that made it necessary to update these forms and protocol in order to offer the citizens of Portland our beautiful parks and fields at a fair value. Nate?
Thank you, Bernice. As Bernice mentioned, my name's Nate Foley, Director for Parks and Recreation. Since I came onboard back in early April, I got roped in with the Commission working on this project to update our pavilions for, or our permits for both the pavilion and the new park that's opening up soon. A big thing I realized first coming onboard for the summer season, and rentals were really ramping up. We noticed a lot of confusion amongst the wording in our permit. People who were coming in inquiring about rentals had a lot of questions regarding liability insurance, why it was required. This insurance was required for field rentals as well, that seemed to be overlooked or passed by a lot of the time. I personally didn't feel like that was a good option. So pushing back, looking at our consistency amongst the wording between both pavilion and field rentals, we wanted to make that wording as specific and lined up as possible amongst those two. We wanted things to be more clear for the user as they were reviewing our permit, our policies and procedures when it came to rentals. We wanted them to know exactly what they were getting into if they wanted to make use of our facilities. We didn't want there to be any questions after they signed up, after they made their payments, and then had questions later on of what additional costs were occurring. So I believe you guys all have the current fee schedule versus the updated fee schedule of our permit specifically for the pavilion. On there, you can note that there was only breakdown between resident organizations and non-resident organizations. As the rental season kind of rolled through, I had a lot of inquiries from previous organizations in town who were given free use of the facility, which is noted down on the updated fee schedule, and that refers to Portland municipal groups. I was a little confused, and it confused me as administration at the Parks and Rec Department specifically, of why we're giving people free use if it's not noted anywhere. I understand the reason for allowing free use for municipal groups, but I think it's something the whole public should be aware of. If that's a fee option, people should know and have it be right there for people to read as they're filling out our permits. So when you look at Group 1 in the updated fees, you'll realize that Portland municipal groups are on there. We use this 1 through 4 grouping as the same grouping procedure that we use for our fields as well. We wanted to once again be consistent amongst the categories we were renting to. We felt that municipal groups was a good group to utilize the facilities for free. Portland community-based nonprofits would have an alternate rate, slightly higher. Community-based for-profit or private groups and private residents would have a different rate than that, and once again, a higher rate for non-residents or community-based profit or other private groups. These were non-residents. So we felt strongly that these different categories should be paying different rates for the facility, prioritizing Portland residents. Now, as Bernice also mentioned, we have seen an increase in rentals from this season to last season. We only went up by about 10, however, so we were at low 20s in 2018, we were right up to low 30s in 2019 for the season. Andy and I over at the Parks and Rec Department are really trying to upgrade our footprint on social media, advertising, and community outreach. So with that said, we're hoping to get pictures, post pictures of our facilities online, be more assertive with our rentals, and spread word to specifically the Portland community, as well as non-residential users. As Bernice also mentioned, we're adding new amenities at the parks. We have our Route 17 coming onboard, that's going to be huge. We have the new gazebo at the Riverfront Park, as well as a new labyrinth incoming. They have a great river view, they have access to bathrooms there, a volleyball court, the band shell. We feel strongly that these amenities deserve a higher price point than what was charged in the past. So based on our new fee here, this is geared towards covering the cost of our grounds crews and maintenance crews who go out on weekends, specifically Saturday and Sunday mornings when we have back-to-back events, and we were losing money in the past. They would come out for a minimum of two hours on a Saturday or Sunday morning. Saturday is getting paid time and a half, Sunday is getting paid double time, and we were only bringing in, when you look back up at that current fee schedule, we were bringing in $100 for a rental, or $150 for a rental. That's basically wiped away with the cleaning fees of them coming in and taking care of the bathrooms. Depending on the party from the night before, there were circumstances where they would be there for three hours, which in turn, we were losing more money under the department. There are options and possibilities to have dumpsters on-site for trash removal directly there. We currently require all guests and users to take their trash with them, which has been brought up as an inconvenience. People don't want to take their trash with them, especially when they have large catered People do tend to leave trash behind as well, which makes more work and time use for the maintainers who come to the facility in the mornings to clean up after these events. These fees, with the new structure, we wanted to include that cost of potentially having a dumpster one day on-site, that's built in there. The fees of electricity on-site is built in, so we included these initially to avoid having to do additional charges later on after a rental is already organized. Going back to the consistency amongst the wording, there were a lot of confusing points within, like I had mentioned, liability. People were not aware of requiring insurance certifications for their different rentals. Large organizations would bring in parties of 100-plus people, and they would have large cookouts, they would have activities, games, they're on-town property. That's on our watch, as far as I'm concerned, and we really wanted to push that forward. And going back, that's both field use and any facility use under the town. We wanted to be clear about when users were going to be on our property. For the pavilion specifically, we allow them to use the pavilion from dusk, or dawn until dusk, depending on the time of year, and from our research with other towns, not many towns allow that. They charge lower rates than our updated fee structure, however, they're charging in terms of three-to-four hour blocks with additional rates per hour after that. None of them allow beer and wine, as we do down at the Riverfront Park, which is an additional reason for that security deposit for the additional charge, because most towns I've found will not allow it at all. A lot of other towns only allow residents to rent out their pavilions. As Bernice also mentioned, with our, the biggest concern we have was the loss of money for our price point on the previous structure. Our maintainers would show up, as I said, Saturday and Sunday mornings on those back-to-back events, which is usually the case with most of our rentals. They're usually on a Friday evening, a Saturday, or a Sunday, which forces those maintainers to come in on the weekends. When that happens, we are paying them excess, and as I said, they can be there anywhere from two to three hours, depending on how much of a mess was left behind in the bathrooms, et cetera, around the facility, because these bathrooms need to be cleaned for the upcoming events. We have weddings at these facilities, birthday parties, just general family get-togethers. And when you rent a facility, you expect the bathrooms to be maintained and prepared as you would anywhere else, so we have to have them come in. I don't think personally we can avoid the option of having somebody come in to maintain those bathrooms and have them prepared for the next day. So by upgrading that price, we are able to pay them no problem, not worry about losing money on that structure. As Bernice also mentioned, we're prioritizing our Portland entities, our residents, and especially the new fields. Going to our field permit, which I believe you guys have as well. Previous to me coming onboard, I don't think there was honestly much of a fee structure set in stone. It was more so $50 per field usage at most of our fields. With these new fields coming onboard, they are high priority amongst Portland residents, as well as surrounding towns, private organizations, and as Bernice also said, people have already reached out to us. They're inquiring, they want to make use of the fields, and we want our Portland groups to have priority of those fields. They've been through the whole process of seeing this park built, they've been onboard the whole time, we have the residents who are all for it, and we want them to be able to utilize the fields to the best of their abilities and really reap the benefits of having them accessible in town. If we do not make the fee structure almost unattainable for those non-resident private groups, organizations such as Vail or Oakwood, the private sports complexes, they're going to bring their teams in and almost take over fields. Trying to, even though we're prioritizing residents, I don't see a fair way to turn somebody down who's willing to rent, reserve, and pay for a field usage. Therefore, the high price structure was implemented for those non-resident organizations, and we looked at a lower rate for Portland municipal groups once again, community-based nonprofits, as well as Portland residents and for-profit groups in town. I believe that's about all I have. The big reason behind this, once again, to create consistency amongst our wording between both field and pavilion rentals. We're going to have a pavilion at the new park that's going to be accessible for rentals as well. We want everybody to understand what exactly they're signing up for when they rent a facility. We'd like to bring more money into the Rec Department overall. Yes?
What's the difference between game day and event? Can you just explain?
Yeah, yes. Game day would be more of a one-day rental. If my team needed a field for the afternoon, I would rent for, I'd have approximately a two-hour time block. And event day would be more of a tournament, hosting multiple teams at a facility. It would most likely be a whole-day activity.
Just to piggyback on top of that, if in fact that tournament was two days, would it be $15 for the weekend? $1,500?
$1,500. Was that discussed at this point? You're referring to Group 4, correct?
Correct. Let's say...
Yeah, so it would be charged per, yeah, technically, it would be $3,000 for the weekend. Expectation with any tournament, from what I've seen in the past, you're having 10, 15, 20 teams hosted at these tournaments, especially looking at the new park, concessions would be open, you're bringing in a lot of people for any local business, as well as what we're offering at the park. Play-scape will be utilized, splash cap, et cetera.
I think that question could get, would be raised if, say, a soccer event was a two-day event. It says, well, it says for the event, it's $1,500. It's like, who's saying, yeah, it should say event per day, if I'm saying? No. Because the event, it could be one event that takes a whole weekend.
Right.
I know what you're saying, but it just should be worded like, event per day.
So you think the language should change?
If it's not, you know, game day, it's, events are different from game day, because game day is just if it says day. If then, you could have a three-day event, and they're going to look at, oh, it says the event's $1,500.
You're saying per day, we should add...
You should add per day, not per turn, just per day, event per day.
Yep, I understand.
Same thing, probably would go for season. I mean, that could be, is that $1,700 for the soccer season for an outside group?
Yes. So the soccer, we have the fall, spring, and summer season, so they would fall, they would pay $1,750 for each season.
So if a group paid for a season, right, then they could run as many of these weekend events as you could schedule at that point. I think that's why, I know that in some of the discussions, first of all, I, having been, when you guys talked about this in Park and Rec, thanks, I thank you guys for a lot of work. I know the Commission has spent a lot of time on this. But that's one of the questions that I have, we're concerned about limiting the usage. You know, you got a $250 jump from an event to whole-season use, which doesn't seem to me like much of a disincentive. In that case, they would just do that. Part of me wonders if we were concerned about that use, whether or not we should just not, you know, for out-of-town type seasons, should we limit it to event usage initially? And not do whole seasons, or do something different with that pricing? But it seems like an event that's $1,500 and then jumping up to $500 for a season, they'll just jump, you know, they're just going to do the season price, and you're not going to have a lot of control over the, how many weekends that they're there.
Thank you for pointing that out. Now, thinking back, I believe we would need to clarify a bit more. Season would be more of a team coming in potentially once or twice per weeknight, two hours for a game, they would come back the following week for another game. It would not be a full-day opportunity with that 10 to 15, 20 teams involved in actual tournament play.
No, no, yeah, understood. I think that definition should definitely be helpful, but again, part of me wonders if we, you know, we want to play with that a little bit. And I think the only other place that, and I know it's something I had asked about in the meetings, I still get a little bit uncomfortable with Portland-based nonprofits, which ostensibly are doing work on behalf of the town. I think, you know, Airline Trail Committee, for example, is doing a tremendous amount of work that directly benefits the town.
That's municipal.
You know, would they be called a municipal group?
They are, they are a committee of the town. Now, Brownstone Forum is not. Historical Society is not. Friends of the Library, not. Those are all nonprofits. But any committees of the town would be a municipal. Now, on occasion, some of these groups will co-sponsor. So if, let's say, a women's group, whatever it might be, it's a nonprofit, I don't even, fictional, let's say it's fictional. If they co-sponsor it with Parks and Recreation in an activity, then it would be a municipal, there wouldn't be a charge. But if they're going out there for their own event, for their own time, without any association with the town, that's different. Then they need to have their insurance separate from the town, that's when they need to have things separate. That's what I'm seeing.
Yes.
But for the soccer league, they're private. So are they aware of these fees? Little League is private.
Right.
Are they aware of these fees? Have they been talked? Have you already gone to the groups and talked to them?
Yes.
And what have they said?
Both soccer and Little League have seemed to be onboard for the most part so far.
I'm a little, I have to think about it. I'm a little confused why it's $1,500 for one event, so a weekend, two-day event, you're paying $3,000. But you can come and practice two, three times a week for a whole season for only $1,750. I don't, is it the wear and tear on the fields? Is it up to you as to what the definition is for a season? So maybe one group's going to be once every two weeks, another group's going to be three times a week? I mean, how are you going to differentiate that?
The, in terms of events and tournaments, wear and tear on the fields would be huge because of the sheer amount of players on those fields for the duration each day. And usually, I believe this would most likely be referring to organizations that are hosting tournaments. Therefore, each team participating in these tournaments, or every league participating, is paying a fee to participate, and then the hosting organization would be paying the town of Portland directly, based on the fees they're bringing in.
Well, I had a question, and you brought it up, and I'm not sure if I'm clear on the definition here. Little League is private, and soccer's private?
Travel soccer.
Travel, let's say recreation soccer.
Soccer.
Would they pay for uses of the field, separate from using the field?
We don't offer recreation soccer. Soccer is all through Portland Soccer Club.
Wow. So the Portland soccer would have to pay how much for a season?
Season would be $500.
And Little League would have to pay?
$500.
I don't know if I can go with that. But...
Based on the amount of players between soccer and Little League, it comes out to approximately $2 to $3 per player per season.
Yeah. And I, I see that, and I understand the cost of keeping the fields and things like that. I just think that kids that are playing Little League from Portland, and kids that are playing soccer from Portland, and their parents that are paying taxes from Portland for a field that was paid for by tax dollars and maintained by tax dollars, would seem like something that we wouldn't do.
But there's fees involved. I mean, when we began this discussion three years ago, it was because there were things that we were putting there that were extra, and that's where we really began the discussion. You talk things about like having extra porta-potty, stuff like that. You know, we have a porta-potty, say, at Rose Hill, because we know we have lots of people that walk the track, and you have a porta-potty. But sometimes when you bring these sports teams in, now you're looking at a situation where maybe you have to add a second porta-potty, and it's really specific to their usage. It's not, you know, we accommodate the general public with porta-potties at facilities to make sure it's covered. But some of these clubs now bring in a situation where you're going to have to bring in additional porta-potties. Those are, that was when, the original discussion we had, two, three years, I don't know how many years ago we started it, that was what we were looking at, is really trying to look at that situation. A lot of discussions came around, we were talking about, like some of the things that, like say football, and obviously I realize they're not here anymore, but they could technically come back, but there was significant cost involved with football, and they really weren't paying any fees on it. So it was, it was taken on by the town, a lot of fees. So that's where that discussion came from, when you start looking at it.
One more addition, and maybe these are good ideas to just throw out, or maybe we should wait until we look at this? What's your pleasure?
Well, if we, we have it twice on the agenda, I wanted to talk about more process, I think, on the agenda. This is, this is, discussion is fine if you want to go back and forth now, or we can have public comment, the monthly budget report, and then bring it up again. What do you want to do?
I just had, I just had one more thing to mention, and, and I think Jim would probably agree with this, and I think you had mentioned, that Brownstone Forum is not a municipality under the definition, and for us to charge them that built that program, that built that park.
Built the park.
You know, basically.
But, well...
Okay.
The park is owned by the town.
Right.
Brownstone Forum helps. All of the grants that we got for the park were obtained by the town. They, no nonprofit group paid for the development of the park. They paid in volunteer hours, just like Airline Trail pays with volunteer hours. But the money for the park is paid for through state grants and/or private grants that may have come in to the town, for the most part. Some of the Boy Scout activities were funded by the Boy Scouts. The Story Trail and the, the new gazebo, the labyrinth has been, it's going to be donated from the Brownstone Forum to the town. Many, many, most of their activities are co-sponsored with Parks and Recreation, so they never pay fees. That's why I mentioned co-sponsoring with Parks and Recreation. So that can happen with any group, though, and that's where you have to be, and I think that's maybe where Lou is going, is that you have groups that participate, they donate, they give things, they pay taxes, and then you're imposing another fee on them. But on occasion, they're doing something with the town, so you don't impose the fee. So it gets complicated.
Yeah, so when you look at the concert series, that's co-sponsored with Park and Rec, so there would be no fee associated with that, because it's co-sponsored with Park and Rec.
Same thing with the Haunted...
Same thing with the, the Haunted Trail event, that's a co-sponsored event.
Yep.
But I, I still look at, I look at the flip side of volunteer groups that are doing and donating, whether, you know, some, not always the grant money, but certainly an enormous amount of labor, time, and in a lot of cases, money, and their own equipment and things like that. That's where I get a little bit, you know, to me, I want to make sure that that fee structure, you know, is fair to those groups that are doing things purely for the benefit of the town. If that's their mission, right, then to me, I want to be careful with those groups.
I just wanted to add that some of our research, we, we did find that some of small towns in, in, towns in this area, they do charge some of their organizations to rent fields, anywhere between twelve hundred and fifty dollars annually to twenty-five dollars per player. So, you know, like, we try to be fair in, you know, like, what numbers that we actually to kind of balance things out. And I know that as far as, as far as parks are concerned, many of them are in the same range, but then they tack on all these extra fees. So there's extra electricity, the dumpster fee is separate, you have to do, if you have a certain number of people, you have to pay more. So for less of administrative headache, we thought that, you know, it would be better to do a straight fee system. And so that's one of the reasons why we decided to go that route to do that. And, you know, I mean, we, you know, like, we have spent two years in trying to make a look at different things, as well as private parks, like Ripon Park as well, and, you know, kind of take a look at whatever we could in order to, you know, present something fair and fair value.
We all felt that including and doing the straight fee with electricity, restrooms, everything additional included into that one price would outweigh the costs of our maintainers, as well as our free groupings who utilize those parks. Having the free usage in the past for different facilities ultimately forced us into losing that money when we had to pay maintainers, and we were charging one set rate for any other user.
What if, Nate, there's a group, and they've been going to the park, and they see, most Saturdays, there's nobody there between three and seven. So they just go, and they have a birthday party, and they do whatever. Bathrooms aren't open, but they don't need the bathrooms, let's say. But they use the pavilion, and they bring their food, and they use the picnic tables and so forth. Are you going to charge them? You can't, right?
No, nobody was enforced that, nobody would stop them, and that's what I see in every town. The point of the permit and the reservation is to guarantee your use.
That's the bathrooms.
Yes, that guarantees your use of the bathrooms. If the dumpster was added to the facility, they would have access to the dumpster for trash removal. Whereas if you just chose to go, it's your priority, it's your responsibility to do whatever's needed. If you choose to leave a major mess behind, that's the town's problem to deal with at that point, unfortunately, because we would not know who's there.
Well, you would, because there are some camps at some of the parks. So you will know. But we haven't had that problem? Is that what you're saying?
No, we haven't.
The dumpsters, were you, you have your dumpster, well, currently, I guess dumpster's not available.
No, it's not.
Are you, in these new fees, are you planning to add a dumpster?
We have had discussions about it. We think it would be beneficial for the renters, because as I mentioned before, a lot of renters have brought up the concern that they are forced to do their own trash removal after any event.
And will these prices be able to cover the cost?
Absolutely.
I have one question above. This goes back to the ballfields for both soccer and baseball. And it may apply to another organization, but I'm only familiar with those. I know you had said earlier that you want to try to keep the Portland organization, so you kept the cost down for them, and you tried a deterrent for other outside organizations coming in. Is there, or did you say, you might have said, I may not have picked up on it, but is there like a first right to refusal? Like, do you give a window for the, we'll say for soccer and for Little League? You got from January first to January thirtieth to book these fields, and then it goes out to everybody else? Because you, I believe you said you've already had outside organizations calling. But like, do we get like a first, we, I'm sorry, do you, Portland, Little League, they do? Is there a first right to refusal there?
Yes.
That's all, I was just wondering if that's a, thank you.
I mean, that's kind of what makes it a little easier to say when we, I know, obviously, you raised good points about seasonal, but those clubs are going to get the first shot of the fields, and they're going to have first say where things are going to be. So chances are, it's going to be difficult for something else to come in with a seasonal, because that is a concern. I know, as we talked about, soccer clubs have already reached out to us. Soccer clubs reach us out, for the last five, ten years, they've been reaching out to us to try to use our facility. And it's, it's a slippery slope, because they have tournaments where they'll bring in out-of-town teams. And it gets a little controversial if you, you know, when we work with, and the Little League's been very good, and the soccer club's been really good, when we talk about, you know what, we can't use these fields today. And everyone understands that, they might, right, but they understand we're trying to save these fields. When you have a, a private organization bring in clubs in from the northeast, and now all of a sudden, you turn around and say, you're not going to get to use those fields, it gets a little more controversial. So, and we've been approached. We were approached, like I said, well before we talked about these permits. So that, that is the, that has always been a concern I've had, especially with looking at the new fields, because you could destroy those fields in one afternoon. So that is, that is the risk. That's why we have a big number. I, you know, I, I know, Jim, you mentioned a thought of, you know, from a seasonal standpoint, do we just not put it out there as something that a, you know, an outside organization could do? I don't know whether we could, I mean, I guess we could limit that. We'd have to talk about whether we really could limit it in that manner, but, but that's really, you know, trying to balance. And certainly, we've talked about, and we've been fortunate, because Little League and, and Soccer Club have been very much in our discussions, and it's been really good. And so they understand what we're trying to achieve. But outside organizations coming in, they're, they're just looking for what they, they want, so we have to be very careful.
And they're not invested in the, in the town's programs.
As Ralph said, I think there would be an option available to limit outside organizations to seasonal use. I think it would, however, be foolish to not allow them at least day or event usage, because our Twilight League, who uses Grant's Field Park, as well as the Connecticut Men's Baseball League, who utilizes, they are bringing in players and teams from outside of Portland. And they have a fair amount of usage on weekend, or weekday nights during the summer and spring seasons.
Did you work with Michelle on this yellow sheet, Nate?
Is that...
You can have that.
I sent her a portion of it.
Okay, because the, the fields, maybe we'll do the same thing for the fields?
Okay.
That might be helpful, because when we, we'll, we'll talk about that in a few minutes, as to how we're going to proceed. But we have to get a public hearing posted in order to, you know, proceed with any changes in fees. So we, we have to have it organized so that it can go out to the public and be printed before we have a public hearing. Keep that in mind. If it's okay, we'll move on to a couple other things, and then we're going to, we're going to come back to this topic.
Can I, just something he said, I want to...
Sure, absolutely.
When you said about the Twilight Leagues...
Yes.
Were you referring to then, maybe you would just charge them by day? Or, or were you saying that they should be charged a seasonal rate?
They're currently being charged by day.
Okay.
That's their current, they pay fifty dollars per night that they utilize the fields. If they know they're going to need a game two weeks from now, usually with these adult leagues, they've already scheduled a lot of games at alternate towns, and they're trying to fill gaps in. So they'll contact us when they need two or three nights a few weeks out, and we'll book them.
Do you think it'd be better, or do you aspire to sign them up for a season, or do you like that, doing it by day?
Honestly, if we could sign people up for an entire season, I think it's more beneficial. It locks them in for a longer duration, as well as brings in more revenue for the department on a night-to-night basis that they might need the fields. We're only bringing in that fifty dollars per usage at that point, and it's very hit or miss, depending on what other towns they're utilizing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. I also wanted to say under communications that we, some of us were able to go to the annual meeting for the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and we think that it was a good meeting. Lou Pear and Jim Tripp and I attended, along with some of our employees also attended. And the town was given a plaque, which is over on the side, when you have a chance, you can look at it, for our sustainability CT. We, among other towns, were presented with a wonderful plaque. And then I had been participating in the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities program. It's in concert with Trinity College, and it's a Connecticut Certified Municipal Official Program. And after a number of credits, it's three credits every time you go to a class that CCM sponsors throughout the state, you accumulate, I believe, thirty-six credits, and you become what's called a CCMO. And I was able to achieve that, so I wanted to point that out to the selectmen and to others, other employees that might be interested. There's really a variety of information, from budgeting to Freedom of Information Act information, to ethics ordinances that, and considerations for municipal government. They also talk about labor relations, they talk about many, many issues. Zoning that you may wish to go to, you have to choose some from personal development, some from sort of land use and planning type, and also other types of research information. So if you're interested in it, you can ask me for more information. I found the programs to be very, very good. They are held in various town halls throughout the state, so you get to meet a lot of other people that are doing work in their communities similar to what you're doing. So keep it in mind and let me know if you'd like to participate. There is a fee, it's a couple hundred dollars, speaking of fees, to register, and then you have two years to achieve all of the classes before you're then certified. And then it's fifty dollars a year to maintain your certification, and so many credits that you have to keep up. But it's beginning, it's beginning to standardize some of the information that municipal officials are privy to and take, partake in. So it's a really good program. Public comment? April? Yes, please, and state your name and street to our recording secretary.
April Graves, Free Stone Avenue. I just have one thing about the Park and Rec and then a question. So for the fee usage, you're accurate for the spring season, that'll be about two to three dollars per player. However, for summer and fall, which are much smaller seasons, we can have only maybe forty players, so that would be more of like a twenty-dollar fee per player. And it's also only a four-week season, as opposed to the long span of spring. And fall ball is only five or six weeks also, with much fewer players. A question that kept coming up at board meetings, and then also among some parents while we were doing a lot of fundraising for the park, was if we're investing tens of thousands of dollars for scoreboards, bleachers and whatnot, and then you start renting it out to people, do they get to use those scoreboards? And then what happens if something happens while they're using them? Scoreboards, sorry, I have a cold.
As of now, that conversation hasn't popped on, had? However, I feel it would be additional fees for usage of any of those amenities at the park.
Okay, so I think they were just looking for like kind of a guarantee that if something happened to that equipment that we purchased for Little League, something happened to it, and then we didn't have it for Little League, how would that work? So that's all.
One thing to think about, and I don't know whether this is, whether this is done drugs and rec or not, but I like a breakage fee. So, you know, you, and I know you do this with the pavilion, so if you put down a couple hundred dollars, and you leave, and everything's perfect, you get your two hundred dollars back. But using a sophisticated scoreboard, I'm sorry?
Right, I don't know if the liability insurance would cover it or what, but just...
Insurance might, something to, it's a good question. Thank you, April. David?
The Park and Rec 40 carousel guy? I, I wasn't going to speak, but I just want to comment on the park thing, just because something jumped out to me that concerns me a little bit, is when I voted yes for the referendum as a taxpayer, I kind of assumed that that was going to be mostly for residents' uses, and maybe wrongly so, but again, getting the impression this is going to be a revenue stream for the Park and Rec to rent out to all the non-residents. And I'm sure you get a lot of questions, because they're saying, wow, there's this great, beautiful new six-million-dollar park, it's all pristine, it's not beat up like some of the ones we use in our town, let's go over and give them their small fee and create havoc over there. I, I really think we need to know who's going to control the abuse, or monitor the abuse and over-usage of non-residents, and, and really monitor that. You may even want to think about, I just threw this on, and maybe for the first year, it's resident use only until we can get a handle on usage, and so we don't turn away our, our Portland residents because we've already committed to a non-resident, that would be shameful, because all the taxpayers are the ones that are paying for this. And, and the second thing was, is when, early on, I had a thought when you were talking about the cleaning of the bathrooms and stuff, when you rent like an Airbnb or stuff like that, they tack on a cleaning fee to your rental fee to clean the stuff, so you may want to think about doing something like that, too.
Right. Good comments, thank you, David.
So I, I would comment with regards to that about usage, you know, you make a good point, but I think one of the things we also talked about was, was that ultimately, the Park and Rec Commission, you know, are going to oversee the applications, and, you know, if they see patterns in there, I would think that as a commission, they could probably look to see how they would tweak or change what they have in terms of, you know, permits. So you're right, if someone all of a sudden realizes they could start, start using the fields every Saturday and Sunday between, you know, five and eight P M. or something, then all of a sudden, you know, they're non-residents, you have a situation, and, you know, it's good when we talk about, you know, the, the organized sports, probably controlling, for the most part, those fields, but there could be gaps in there, especially when you hit summer, when you're not looking at as much activity, so it's a good point.
Well, you haven't been here quite a year, Nate. We did years ago with different selectmen, talk about a fee structure for the use of parks, and it became quite a discussion, and it ended up not passing, just because at that point, we didn't have new parks, but it, there's a lot of issues that go through everybody's mind, I think, when you start, actually, as you've done a nice job, thank you, for putting together these applications and the actual numbers, and then the people that haven't thought about this begin to think about it. You're going to get a fair number of questions, I think. So, just wanted to add that as my comment. Don't, don't think that this is something only on what you've put up, because last time, there were, there were loud voices at this table, and so far, it's been tame. But you might get, you might get some more comments, or you might not. I mean, times are different now, and the quality of our facilities is quite different as well. But there's still that whole concept of making sure that when people are using the facilities, it's a fair way of charging those people that are paying for the facilities already, and have for years in some cases, and certainly will be for the next several years. So we want to protect them, and I think the schedule that you've come up with is helpful in terms of meeting the expenditures associated over and above the simple, you know, grooming of the fields and things. You're talking about activities and possible damage, and like David pointed out, the cleaning of the, the use of some of these facilities, that you really, that's over and above maybe what. So that, that's sort of what I think the board has to begin to think about, as well as the people that are going to come to the public hearing. And I want to make sure that it's also in keeping with our financial requirements, because some of these facilities are bonded, so we have to make certain as to how we're taking dollars, that it meets all those requirements, too. Those are all part of our process. In the meantime, Tom has the monthly budget report. In the meantime, Tom has a monthly budget report. The selectmen had gotten a budget report a couple of weeks ago that we had left for them, and I think they all had looked at them. So before Tom goes through any updates, I want to ask if there were any questions on the reports that you had given to us previously. Tom? Selectmen, any questions? Anybody else? So these are updated numbers? Please. Thanks, Tom. I already had mine. Thank you. I guess there are no comments at this point.
So we have here the revenue and expense reports for the general fund as of November 30th. It's a few days into the month, so there could be more activity obviously occurring. But on page one of the revenues had, as we had spoken before, our current revenues had come in well. We'll have another cycle in January. Prior collections, there have been a few, some decent payoffs there early in the fiscal year, so that had exceeded our number. So that's a positive. Interest and liens in the motor vehicles, some amount we'll actually be collecting soon. We have received our first payment for educational caution. That's line 00101. So we received that 1.14 million. That's good. State-owned property came in as expected, which was good. Under the property rental, we've received our first couple installments from Oak Hill on an arrangement that the Board of Ed had worked out of to utilize the biz. It's about an $80,000 agreement. And we've received two quarters of that. We've received some payments from the Brownstone Exploration Park. So the total of those two combined are the $315 that you see in account 0300303. Town clerk's fees are coming in, you know, as expected. The private duty monies will come in strong as the expenses are high on that as well. But the revenues will come in strong on that. And that's related to some of the work on Route 66, Middletown project work and Spring Street project work and some of the sidewalk work, as well as other contractors within town, or companies that use our police departments in town, EverSource and things of that nature. We will keep watching structural permits as we had anticipated. Some monies coming in from the Brainerd Place. So far, we haven't really seen much on that, so hopefully we will get more of that in the spring. That's just hope out of any information that I know. We have, we have budgeted some revenue. I think around a 2% increase for interest investment income. The rates have dropped, so we'll keep watching that. That's one of those ones where you can, you know, it's a sticky number. In the past, we had been around 0.5 to 0.6% revenue coming in on that percent. Last year, we were up in the two, mid-twos. Now it's come under two. There's also been multiple mergers of banking institutions. We, we had used Farmington Bank, which has merged into People's United. We use United Bank, which has merged into People's United as investments courses. So we're going to continue to review that. We also, many of our investments are in stiff. And then our main operating bank is TD Bank, so, and we do have monies with Liberty as well. So there's a broad scope, but it's a, it's a little unfortunate that they have that many mergers, but I'm sure we'll work well with People's United. Any questions on revenue? Expenses, page five. As we, as I spoke to you earlier, line, general fund line, Department 23, which is the police, police private duty, budgeted expenses at $140,000 and the expense to date is $124,000. So, so it's, you know, that money is being used. We'll have to keep watching that throughout the year to see when springtime comes up, how that picks up. And we'll obviously watch the corresponding revenue stream. But just wanted to bring your attention to that line. Page seven. Town engineer, the residential plan review and inspections. Seems that there's been more, you know, work needed in that account. There's been $947 expended, so there's only about $52 remaining for the year, so every year...
Is there revenue to go to offset that, Tom?
There's really no offset per se to a town engineer account. There's, you know, revenue line items within the budget, none that are generating excess of any sort.
Right.
So we, you know...
But it's not covered under the building permit fees?
Well, we're, you know, like I stated before, that there's not a, it's not at a level that we would hopefully like, the structural permit fees. So, you know, that's what I got. Most of the other lines at this point are doing, been okay. A few other items just to consider that we'll be bringing to you and reviewing. One of the police cars was involved in an accident, which totaled the vehicle. So we're working with the insurance company, we're working with our leasing company. So as likelihood, it's going to have to be a payoff of that vehicle on the lease. And, you know, then that consideration after that of replacing the vehicle that was been damaged. So that is an item out there that we're reviewing and working with. And the, in, not in the general fund, but in Fund Four and the Animal Control Fund, the van that we have that runs for that facility has been removed from operations as it, as safety concerns. And therefore, we'll be reviewing that to replace, probably likely will be able to do that from Fund Four itself, as there are monies within that global fund and the fund balance of Fund Four, but, which is Animal Control. But we will, you know, get the pricing on that and bring just the information to y'all on that when it comes to...
Is there any question on that?
Where's, where's this Fund Four you're referring to?
Fund Four is the Animal Control Fund.
Okay. What page is that on?
Fund Four is not in this. It's the general fund. Fund Four is in our budget, you know, in our budget book. We have the...
Oh, okay.
Fund Two is water, and Sewer Three is water, Four, Animal Control.
So their vehicles...
It's not safe. It doesn't accelerate.
You know, it's that light van, Rick? It was a picture of a little cartoon dog in there. It's very old and it's not able to be repaired anymore, according to our...
All right. So we're going to need a new van.
Yeah. But there's money within that fund that's been accumulated over the years that we have enough to buy a van.
Yeah. So, I mean, that does need to occur for safety purposes as well as the actual functionality of the Animal Control. So what will occur is we'll utilize the state contract, get the van to replace it, and then equip it with the equipment that we need and utilize Fund Four monies for that. That will occur, so.
You're going to do that soon?
Yeah. I think, I think that the captain and Public Works and Animal Control are, you know, working toward that as a, you know, goal is working toward getting that accomplished. And the police, police matter as well is that, you know, we've, we've informed the leasing company. They've come back with some of the options and we'll review those and come up with a plan on that as well.
So the car that's damaged, though, we have a police officer now without a vehicle?
He's utilizing one of the older vehicles that's, you know, has some mileage. So, yeah, it's, you know, there's some age in that fleet. We had, at one point, acquired a bunch of 2012s that are in that. And then the last lease program, we had, I think, four vehicles and unfortunately, two of them has since been totaled by people hitting our officers. So, you know, we worked through the last one and then this year, we have another one. So it's just unfortunate because, you know, we have the quality cars that get damaged and then we're kind of left with the, we have to fund the replacement of those vehicles, pay the, pay the debt as well as try to fund the ones that aren't so good. And it's, the other part is with insurance is you never really get the dollar value of, especially with these. And there's been Ford, as well as Chevy, as well as Dodge, there's been a change in the market structure for the police departments. All vehicles are much, much more expensive than they used to be. And they're, and right now Ford did a redesign. So we already had one on order anyway, and that's still on order. We issued that early in July after the budget, you know, the new year started. And they're, you know, still building those vehicles. So that's also tricky as well is, you know, you're, you're in a new year for Ford. Dodge has the Durango that they have the enforcement vehicle on. And they have theirs, they might also have also the Charger as well. Chevy more or less is out of it, except if you were to get a Tahoe of some sort. But they're, they're not in it very much. GMC is similar, would have their, their version of the Tahoe. So, but generally, we've been trying to get the police vehicles that have, that are rated for the crash ratings. So, you know, Ford has that, I believe Dodge has that right now. So those are the, generally, those are the two we've been getting for police. And then for fire, they've been using the Tahoe. They have been recently using the Tahoe in the expedition. They need a little bit larger vehicle to transport for medical calls. So we'll be working through those other, those issues. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. As always, if there's additional questions on this for the next time, Tom will be able to answer it.
Can I ask him one more?
Yeah, sure.
How are we, how are we doing on a collection from the water park? Are, are they on schedule? Are there payments for the season? And maybe how much more is due to come in from them?
The collections, I don't have the specifics on that with me, but I mean, I do know that with the, though in account 303, of $315,000, $40,000 of that is Oak Hill.
Okay.
So majority, there's a few other things at other, the school events, but the majority of that would be from Brownstone Exploration. They had made a payment recently. I do not believe it was, I don't believe it was in full for, I don't want to speak to the specifics because I don't have that in front of me, but it was not in full for the amount that was due.
Okay.
All right? So...
Okay. So now we're back to number eight for reviewing and updating the fee schedule for parks and recreation. So we have to have a public hearing on whatever this board decides to put forward. And what I would like to have is, excuse me, not just the riverfront pavilion stage and so forth, but I think also the changes for the fields. Does that, has that changed, Nate?
Yes.
I asked two pages ago.
That's not my question.
Yes, there's changes on the fields.
Right. So the fields have changed, so we need to put that in a chart like this, too, so that people can clearly see what the new rates would be. We don't typically put the old rates at the new rates. Maybe we can. And that's what I'd like to talk a little bit about with the selectmen. When we put this out for public hearing, what do you want it to look like? I'll open that up. Lou?
Well, I think it's, it's definitely easy to understand what the fees were before and what they are now, or what the proposed was. I mean, that, to me, you kind of see the difference. You had said that you had looked into other towns, and I'm wondering if we could get copies of maybe East Hampton and Cromwell, you know, comparable towns, and see what their fee, fee rate schedules are. And maybe I spoke too soon on saying that I wouldn't support this because I can remember when our kids, of course, they're much older now, when they participated in park and rec programs, they participated in park and rec programs. And I'm learning a little bit now, too, that there aren't park and rec programs for soccer and there aren't, and I guess when our kids played Little League, there was no fee either. I'm not sure how that worked, whether there was a charge to play at Tomaso Field. I'm not sure how that worked, but that's a long time ago. And so for these, these schedules, I mean, there's two ways of looking at it. One, you could charge a fee, or two, when we come to budgeting, we could budget for park and rec so that it would include all of the needs of park and rec. I mean, there would still be things that you would raise money for if there was a fee for, I don't know, I don't know what you, right now, you have some fees for certain programs. But it seems as if these fees are needed to maintain the new, new park as well as maintain the riverfront park. And then some of the costs, I mean, Nolan Field has lights. $50 a night is not going to probably pay for the electricity. So it's, it's a nominal fee. And maybe the fees that I'm looking at that seem high for local kids to participate maybe aren't that high. And maybe I just need to see what other towns are doing so that we can compare that.
Along that line, when we were looking at fees for something else, and I forgot what it was, but...
Food trucks?
Yes. Thank you.
We looked at that many times.
Yeah. We had quite an array of towns. I think one town was Enfield. And then we had the, we had Middletown, Cromwell, the local ones. So I would say get us matery, but we definitely want, definitely want to see our neighbors. But, you know, if Enfield or Thomasville or something, maybe you put examples in, fine, throw it in. The more information, the better.
Just be, just be prepared to have, just like with the food truck numbers, we're all over the place, these numbers are going to be the same.
Okay.
Do you have, and maybe the commission's already talked about, a budget going forward. So you know how much it costs to clean the bathrooms, for example. You know how many times people are going to come in and use the facility and the kinds of things that wear and tear. I mean, you're going to get people knocking into the wood at the pavilion. You're going to have some damage to some of those facilities. There needs to be some kind of, and I'm presuming you've already done that, some of that, the wear and tear factor, which kind of goes to why there's a fee for the use of these. It's not just because we want to charge people money, but it's so that the facilities can maintain the level of quality that they have and any expenses that go into doing not only the maintenance, but also the care and upkeep. You do have to pay to clean those bathrooms. You do have to bring in a dumpster and clean that. And there's probably going to be some other things I haven't even thought about that you do and you have thought about. So I think if you could come up with maybe a list of those kinds of things and your anticipation for a typical event and what that could cost and, and how you're coming up with those expenses. And the same for the new park. I think you have to take a look at, you know, if someone's going in to clean the concession building, what's that going to cost? They're going to clean the... They're going to clean the facilities, the bathrooms, there's a cost to that. It's going to be higher certainly than in the Riverfront Park because you have the concession. So and again, you may already have done this Nate, I just haven't seen it because I haven't attended the meetings. I think then it begins to become more apparent, at least to to me as a board member, why you're coming up with these numbers. And the numbers may be right on, the numbers may not be. When you really start to analyze it and take a look at it. You've been working on this for a couple of years, so I'm sure you've already worked it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think too, along what you're saying is if I get a sense from this that they're trying to be self supportive of the facilities. Somebody's got to pay for it, either they charge fees or we have to charge the taxpayers. So there's kind of two ways of looking at it. If you don't charge anything, you could get a pushback from the taxpayers that are saying gee, I spent, we spent six million to build these parks and now we're spending another several hundred thousand to maintain them, I'm getting taxed again. So I think, you know, hopefully we'll find a happy medium. But you're right, I mean, wear and tear, you have to charge something for that.
Just keep in mind you really don't want to pay to have the bathrooms cleaned for someone's private wedding. We don't want to be putting that into our uh into our budget.
Right.
That's a very different category.
And if you don't charge something, you're going to run into sort of just, you know unabated use, right? At least if there's a fee, that becomes a controlling factor with how much they're used. Because the other side of that is we want residents to be able to go down there and use them, you know, when they're not being used for private events. For folks to go down there and walk their dogs inside the pavilion and be able to use the parks as well. So you don't always want them like for example encumbered.
So I have a question too, like if if a ball field is not being used by an organization, you know, on a van or it's just vacant and it's an evening, can a bunch of residents just go there and run around the bases or hit a ball if they want to do?
Yeah, unless you're having like a park ambassador who oversees the facility and monitors for things like that, absolutely. If you brought a group of ten guys in, they want to take it around, they catch. There's nobody that would shut you out unless the park actually was locked up at night and it was closed for use from certain time to certain time, if you were in there at that point.
Oh yeah, then it would, right.
But there's no one stopping from going to use the field at some point.
And were there any, were you charging any fees previously for the Riverfront Park? Okay, so these are new, these are new fees.
What I want to work on um is to to your point, Rick, what the current numbers are and then what the proposed numbers are for each, if we can do it for these different groups. And if it has to be a different chart, then we'll do a different chart. I think that would be helpful to people and the same for the fields. So it might be separate from your application. So we would take the current numbers and compare them to the numbers that are proposed. So in summary, we'll we'll get that, we'll work with you, my office will work with you on that. Um and then I think we need to work on collecting and making available to the selectmen the different towns and how they their fees are. Information I think you've already got. And then um sort of a a a good estimate as to what a typical event may cost with that wear and tear factor as well as the Riverfront Park. And I think that'll help in terms of the numbers. And you've got to look at it for a year after, you know, we got to get something established. And then we'll look at it the next year or on a periodic basis and make changes as needed. And I'll talk with Tom's office just to make sure that what we're doing is in keeping with anything associated with the bottom.
I do also want I want you guys to take a look at all of the policies and the rules and regulations in the park. And the old park resources and especially number eleven, the state waiver and merger from the park and recreation and the rest of the regular. So someone could, you know, say we're having this for a nonprofit, we're having this for that, you donate or whatever. So that's something that um you need to look at as well.
What number was that Bernice?
That number eleven.
That next last page.
You've done a lot of a lot of research on this.
And so um so we have to use small font.
No, that's good.
But um and I'm hoping that this can be vetted through the legal department just to make sure we didn't miss anything. Again, our interest is really to make sure that um that we're at Town of Portland um protected and you know like our investment, we invest in a lot in this park and other parks. And I think that it's really important that um we cover ourselves. And so I think that that's one of the biggest reasons why we started on this um process of updating these permits and you know really to work on.
Are there any questions? Because those are all good points and I forgot to tell you to go up to the microphone, so I apologize. My fault, yeah, would you mind just saying a few things? Because actually a lot of people like to watch these on YouTube so you could just highlight a little bit of some of these rules.
Um this is Bernice Sanpino. And I just wanted to make sure that the board as well as the town people understand the rules and regulations of the park and the field usage. I think that it's very important that we um protect our investment, not only of the new park but the other facilities that we have in our town. And that's one of the reasons why we, you know, went off to launch um these new permits and the policies that go along with that. So you know, we would welcome your feedback.
Great, and I want to thank you as chairman as well as um the other members, um I know Karen is here. I'm sorry?
Team effort.
Team effort, yeah, from Parks and Recreation Commission and I know that some of our selectmen have been helpful to us, liaison certainly Nate, your work as well as Andy. So I will put this on the next agenda and get you some more information um ahead of time. And if while we're talking about this, because this is a little bit of a project. If the selectmen want to look at this ahead of time, I can get it ready for you ahead of time. But then you have to bring it to the meetings. Because I don't want to necessarily make up double packets unless you want me to, so.
Save a tree.
It's up to up to you sir, but I'm trying to be careful about paper use.
Yes, that's good.
Be good.
That's great.
Because I'm not good, I always forget.
No, that's good.
One question that I have is I'm assuming that you'd like to try to have the new fee structure in place for the beginning of the for the spring seasons. So when would we have to have this, you know, working backwards, right? When would we when would you need this approved by? Like when do you start establishing everything, you know, with the with the clubs and that?
We were hoping to launch January first with these um with these policies and people are starting to inquire now for May for May wedding dates. And so that's when our typical our season is for the park um pavilion areas. They're usually made to October. And so, you know, we would like to not stall and pass, you know, lose out on a somebody's event because you don't have this in place, so you know.
Well, I was going to ask, were you thinking public hearing in two weeks or?
It's not ready.
No, I am, that's I was.
You're not going to make January one? We'll try to get as close as we can. And I will say that Park and Rec Commission gave this to us earlier, but I wanted to wait until the new board was established because it came at in the late fall and it's really difficult to get um a board to start working on a project like this that involves fees and then it could be a whole different set of people.
Would it be beneficial to have a statement that says cosponsored uh programs or cosponsored events of nonprofit groups with Park and?
And that may have to be readjusted.
Yeah, just to cover.
The language may really need to be readjusted that way. So um that may be something that we want to consider.
So that's what it is looking, that that doesn't specifically say uh sponsored events, but it's taught. It there's a waiver there for
Right, I mean.
Hardships, I guess, but wouldn't be a hardship. It would be more of a cosponsored event.
Okay, so we'll work on more information to get to you before the next.
Very well done, a lot of work.
Yes, good job. The next item um is something that comes to us periodically. And it's an authorizing resolution for us to participate in a grant. And you'll see that it is in the pink.
You just need a motion to approve? All right. Do you do we do you want the whole thing red or do you just want me to just uh make a motion? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the um authorizing resolution for the certification associated with getting the grants for Homeland Security Grant Program dated December four, two thousand and nineteen. What's that, I'm sorry? Um sure, I'd also request you waive the reading because we all have it in front of us.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
It seems like it's a good grant, anything that we should know about it other than it's procedural?
Money typically um directly, this comes through the Capital Region Council Governments. And we participate with them, Don Guin participates in that program. So this allows us to be part of that quite typically. Anything you want to add to that, Don?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed, abstentions, motion carries? The next um is transfer of the Oak Hill Schools rent. And um Board of Education has requested that the money associated with the rental of the Oak Hill um go to them. And because the the decision as to the amount and the agreement didn't happen until after July one, this was not in the budget. Going forward, should they continue to stay, it'll be part of our budget season and discussion. But I think that we should read this into the record. Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, December four, two thousand and nineteen. Supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education budget total and increase to estimated revenue for the property rental. Whereas the Town of Portland Public Schools entered into an agreement with the Connecticut Institute for the Blind which does business as Oak Hill in early fiscal year two thousand and twenty for rental of space at Brownstone Intermediate School. And whereas the agreement is for eighty thousand dollars in property rental fees for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. And whereas the Board of Education has requested from the town that the funds received from this agreement be added to the Board of Education budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. And whereas the revenues in line item oh one zero 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 and so forth, three oh three, ending in three oh three. Property rental is now expected to come in eighty thousand dollars over the originally budgeted amount which is due to the Oak Hill rental agreement and you saw that tonight where property rental was hired. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portland Board of Selectmen hereby approves the supplemental appropriation to the general fund of the education Board of Education budget and an increase in estimated revenue to the line item ending in three oh three known as property rental in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. So in other words, property rental will go up eighty thousand because we didn't know about this when we put the budget together. And the Board of Education will get that eighty thousand dollars as part of their operating budget. And it is up to them as per state law as to how they spend them.
Um I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution titled supplemental appropriation for Board of Education budget total and increase to estimated revenue for property rental as read into the record and dated December four, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Michael.
Susan, how much is?
Discussion.
Okay, I see how long the the lease agreement is for Oak Hill?
One year.
This year by year, that's it?
The agreement was not signed by me, it was signed by Dr. O'Reilly. And um it is a one-year rental agreement.
That doesn't seem typical, like to get it out after every year, like.
Tom, do you have any comment on that?
To my knowledge, you really want to do a private program, see if the facility works for them.
Do we foresee them like maybe doing an extended lease program or is it they're just going to?
I think so, Michael, I did speak with um a representative, not the person that's directly responsible for the Oak Hill project here in town, but he works for Oak Hill. And he said that it seems to be going very well. Superintendent says it's going well, so we're hopeful that if they sign a multi-year agreement, that would be helpful for us in budgeting purposes going forward.
Going into the future, okay.
But for this year, it's a one-year.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Other comments on it or questions? You ready for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Could you come up to the podium for a second time? Is there a public hearing required?
There is a public hearing required.
Well, this is a special appropriation.
Section uh twelve oh three oh three requires a public hearing on the.
Because it's a.
Supplemental appropriation. Doesn't require a town meeting, but it requires a public hearing.
Okay, so the agree, the the selectmen are in agreement with this, so now we'll need a motion. And we can make this um for the eighteenth at seven o'clock, which I think I thought it, did Michelle give that to us?
No, that was the original thing for the park stuff that we put.
Right. No, I don't think she gave it to us. So it'll just be a public hearing and it'll be the language that's in this resolution.
I hear something on a public hearing. Yeah.
It's the same resolution, right?
She talks about the eighty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so the suggestion is December eighteen at seven fifteen PM here in the Mary Flood Room. I'll make that as a motion to have the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Luke. All in favor of having this resolution go to public hearing? The public comment on the eighteenth at seven, we said seven fifteen?
This says seven fifteen.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yes.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? I apologize because my packet is not.
It got it got misattached, it wasn't with the right paperwork.
Okay.
That's why, that's why we missed it first.
I think it's with the other public hearing.
Yeah, I was a little behind it.
Okay, got it, thank you for your clarification. Okay, Tom, fourth quarter transfers, what's next?
So this, yearly, we approve the fourth quarter transfers. So during the monthly budget reports, I try to give you an overview of where the, the items are over budget or for having goods and bad. So a few of the areas, the first is the municipal and driver stipends. That was a municipal agent of the elderly. This year, we had some more utilization of that program. I think there was also a, maybe the car was put into play there as well for the drivers to utilize to help out the, the usage in this. So there was some over, over expense in that budget, and they needed 850 to bring that over to a positive. The town engineer budget, the subdivision, so the way that this, what we try to do here is we try to make the, all the budgets positive. That's kind of how that works. It's not necessarily every line item within it, you're making the global, that department budget positive. So the town engineer needed these three amounts to get to a positive. So the subdivision, the subdivision inspection line, there was just more reviews and inspections. That was about $11,000 number. The public works engineering, there was quite a bit of MS4 permitting that has been talked about for the past few years in the budget cycle, hoping to get more money in that line item. There was other projects that were going on, not projects that were like Spring Street or funded by bonds, but other just projects within the town that we were working on that, that brought that to go up. The public safety engineering, there was a traffic study done for some traffic related items that was not budgeted for that was completed. So those are the numbers for engineer. The election supplies number needs 1,096. We had two referendums, we had a gubernatorial election as well as a recount, I was told. And storm removal, that was, last year was a tough year. All, all the storms fell on, many of them fell on the weekends or on holidays. So there was quite a bit of overage in the overtime. There was savings on the road materials. So the total budget needed $32,000. And then with the open, the need for the future land acquisition of, on the Brownstone Avenue, the transfer additional $100,000 was transferred to the open space account, which is AKA the land acquisition account. So those are the monies that were needed, the budget items that needed funding. We took those from contingency, which was $53,380 that wasn't spent directly out of contingency. And there was $20,000 that we were able to reallocate due to vacancy and personnel changes. So it was timing on how we filled positions. There was $20,000 in the senior center regular, or $30,000 from the senior center regular payroll. And that was a transition within the directorship and kind of a cross-job position with youth service and senior center. We took $10,000 from risk management. There's some monies within the risk management we fund for self-insured claims. We had less of those, so we were able to utilize $10,000 of monies there. Debt service, we had capital lease principal. We had a better lease terms. And so we had less need for the principal payment at that point, so we really used $9,000. Street lighting electricity, there was about, we usually use $20,000. It seems to be that there has been some cost savings related to that transition with the LED lighting that EverSource did. So that was a savings there. And then employee fringe benefits, this kind of costs, a cost savings related to the vacancies that resulted in $20,746 of available funds to be reallocated to these other areas. So everything's very much, kind of all areas that we were anticipating it to occur. And just, any questions?
On the open space transfer, I thought we had most of the money already accounted for in our open space fund.
So as a fiscal, as a fiscal year 19, we had, we did, we did transfer additional $100,000 into the open space account so that you would have the money in fiscal year 20. And this is getting that into, this is getting the budget money moved into, within the operating budget of the general fund to cover.
Okay, so this utilizes, didn't we, don't we every year put something like $50,000 into the open space fund?
Correct. So this was an extra $100,000 to go into the fund.
Okay.
So that monies would be in place.
So is this 100, is 50 coming from fiscal 19 and 50 from fiscal 20, or is this all fiscal 20?
This is, these are all fiscal 19.
All fiscal 19.
Everything's fiscal 19 here.
Okay.
And $150,000 totality came in fiscal 19. 50 of the original budget, $100,000 was moved in. And, and then $50,000 for this year was put in in fiscal year 20.
Okay.
So these are just to get the balances to the positive, as Tom pointed out, but the areas down below were all, were dollars that were not expended. And even with that, I don't know what the surplus was for last year. Do you know yet, Tom, for the general fund?
How much is left in contingency?
No. How much would be, like retained earnings? In other words, that's not what they call it in governmental, but the excess of revenues over expenditures.
So I can give you, as I have here printed out, the budget revenues that came in, the budget revenues that came in were, appear to be $34,25410. And the budget expenditures, $33,622,944.
Yeah, there were...
About $632,000.
I was just doing the math. He's quicker than me.
Which is a good number.
Yeah.
But you'll get that when the budget for fiscal year 19 is reviewed as part of the audit presentation. It usually isn't until March, but I wanted you to know that we did finish last year to the positive by about $632,000. So I need a motion to approve these fourth quarter transfers.
I'll do it. I'll make a motion that we approve the fourth quarter, fourth quarter transfers based on the sheet that was dated December 4, 2019, and as presented, resolve that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the below fiscal year 2018, 2019 year and general government transfers for the Town of Portland.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion?
So is our open space fund now pretty much zero or...
Yeah, there's not much left in there.
Okay. And we already, and we already done our contribution for 2020, but...
I don't, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I do believe most of it was used for the purchase, correct, Tom? Correct. When you have, you know, excess of, of revenues over expenditures, you can just let that be part of the fund balance, which is, was 19%. So this will increase our percent expenditures that we have in reserve. It's always something that you can look at allocating.
Okay. Well, that's heartening to see that number.
Yes. Yes. It's a good number.
Yeah.
So we'll move on to number, I called for the vote. Do I call? No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next is the 824 referral to Planning and Zoning Commission on the proposed land swap with the Exchange Club of Portland, map 75, lots 27 and 28. There is a, a mock-up of the map that we gave to our attorney, and we gave to Planning and Zoning. You don't have it? No. You've already had this before?
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right.
I mean, the land swap is something we've been talking about for months. So I did not, you do not have that now. This is, this is another...
That's another...
I'm just reading. I'm familiar with the other one.
But in order to proceed, we have to go by law to Planning and Zoning to have them say whether this land swap would be in keeping with the plan of conservation and development. So they had this actually on their agenda, but I wanted to bring it to you to formally send it to them for their review before you take further action.
So is, it's on their agenda for tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So is there a motion to have it referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the 824 referral?
Hold on. Second.
So the motion was made by Lou and seconded by Rick. Any questions on that or discussion?
I was just going to say, just as a point of information, I spoke to Jim Hill or left a message with Jim Hill today, as we had talked more about the accuracy with the survey as well as the meets and bounds that needs to be added to that land transfer before it's done.
So we can proceed with a public hearing and a town meeting?
Sure.
And I have suggested a town meeting because a number of us are members of the Exchange Club. We would have to recuse ourselves from any further discussion on this. But if we send it to a town meeting, then the actual vote would be by the town people, not by this board meeting. After the election, there's now four people that are not members of the Exchange Club. So it's, it's going to be up to this board as to how you want to proceed.
When do we have to decide that, or is that...
Well, you, when you decide, you're going to have to have a public hearing, but we don't have the survey completed, and we don't have the meets and bounds description, Rick. So I don't want you to set the public hearing yet or the town meeting yet, if that's what you choose to do. So that's what we need to decide.
I would say see what the, see what kind of response we get from the public hearing. I'm not sure in my perspective it needs to go to the town vote.
But I do think you'll have to recuse yourself because you're a member of the Exchange Club. So you're not going to be able to vote.
No.
So even the decision associated with the public hearing and so forth, I think, I don't know, I'll have to do a little more research on that.
Well, we definitely have to have the public hearing and see if there's any, you know, what comes out of that. I think that's a good idea. I also think that a public town meeting is a good idea too. But maybe we should wait until we have the public hearing, and then we can make a decision on whether to go forward with a town meeting. Yeah.
Because Ben was a member of the Exchange Club.
Right.
Like, that's why we couldn't, couldn't just have this board vote. But you're not a member, Lou's not a member, Jim or, or Mike, the other Mike.
Well, a public hearing would come first anyway.
Yes. Yes. Correct. Sure. So we'll see that on a future agenda. The next is consideration. Now, did I take the vote on that? Laura?
Yeah.
Okay. We're all set on that.
Sure.
Yeah. And in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So the next item is item number 13. Now, this is a fixed assessment application by CRS, which is Cody Richard Serv. And this is the Cody, Chris Cody Golf has expanded its building on Portland Cobalt Road. And so you have in front of you an analysis of their application by our assessor, which is in keeping with an ordinance that we, or actually a policy that we have on doing fixed assessments. So I think we should look at the application first. And I'll read it into the record. The land, oh, wait a minute, that's the analysis. The application states that a commercial building of 3,135 square feet will be constructed on the site. It's nearly complete at this point. The building will house four indoor golf hitting bays for virtual golf entertainment. The tenant of the building will be Chris Cody's Golf Shop LLC. The scope of the project and plans were approved by the Town of Portland. The cost of construction is budgeted at $150,000. Construction will begin in August 2019 and completed in November 2019. And this was submitted to us on 10/17/19. And our assessor reviewed the application, which is asking for the fixed assessment to be set at 50% of the increased assessment for a three-year period. And you can see what Mr. Lasky, our assessor, put together. He's saying that the land is worth $110,250. The improvement is, let's see, currently $247,520 is the building. The increased value will go to $358,470. And that is an increase of $110,950. And 50% of that is $55,475. So the total fixed assessment would be $413,245 instead of, without this granting of this fixed assessment, $468,720. So in the calculation for three years of that reduction of half of that increase, the taxes that would be abated based on the current mill rate of 33.81 would be $5,626.83. And we've also provided for you a picture of the current building as well as layout, as well as the policy that we have on fixing real property assessments. If you would like to continue to review this, you can put this on the 18th agenda. Then I'll open it up for questions.
It's in keeping with our policy. It's in keeping with our section C, so it's consistent.
You could act on it tonight, or you can act on it at a future meeting. It's the pleasure of the board.
Just wanted to ask a question. It seems as if it would be the same amount of deduction or tax adjustment as the property that was percentage as the property on Marlborough Street.
I believe it is. Because our policy says that if the cost of improvements is not less than $25,000 and up to $499,999, then the assessment or the increase in the assessment may be fixed at 50% of the increased assessment for a period not greater than three years. So that's a... So that's in keeping with the policy.
Yeah, that's fine.
So the improvement, does that also, would that also include the equipment that was put in there? Or that's separate?
If you look at the policy, policy is only on real property, not on personal property.
Is this complete? This project? Is the construction done?
Nearly. If it's, I don't know that the certificate of occupancy has been given, but when the application was made, it had not been.
So the three years would start, well, this coming July?
When they get the CO, it starts, right?
Correct.
When we set the grant list, it is for October 1. So the taxes that are due on the property as it exists now has already been issued.
Of course. Okay.
So the new, Tom, would it be for starting next fiscal year?
I would defer to Rich on that.
I'd like to know when it's gonna start.
I would defer to Rich Lasky on that proposal.
So you want to know when it's going to start, right?
Yes. I suppose it doesn't matter all that much, though three years is three years.
Right.
So this is the new assessment, it's already been assessed.
It's an estimate.
Okay. I guess I'm okay if the rest of you guys want to vote on it.
I'm okay to vote on it today, too, awesome.
Me, too.
Yeah, me, too.
Someone want to make a motion?
Do you want to put the whole thing right in?
Sure.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution made December 4, 2019, titled Resolution Authorizing the Fixing of Real Property Assessments. Whereas the town has an existing policy to encourage the growth and expansion of commercial and industrial parcels by allowing for the fixing of real property assessments where a proposed development meets the requirements of CGS Section 12-65B and whereas CRS Property LLC developed a parcel of 750 Portland Cobalt Road, map 31 lot 1, referred to as the property, for real business use and whereas it is the town's best interest and is consistent with its economic development policies and its policy on fixing real property assessments, in quotes, policy, in particular to encourage this proposed development and whereas CRS Property LLC, the owner of the property, has submitted an application to the town dated October 11, 2019 to fix its real property assessment for the continued development of the property in accordance with CGS Section 12-65B and the town's policy, the application, in quotes, and whereas the town staff has reviewed the application and confirmed that it appears to meet the eligibility requirements for the fixed tax assessment as set forth in the general statutes and the town's policy. Now therefore be it resolved after due consideration and review. The Town of Portland hereby approves the application and authorizes the first amendment to execute a tax assessment fixing the agreement for the purpose of fixing the real property tax assessment on the property in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in CGS 12-65B and the town's policy.
Just one slight error? Should be October 17.
October 17.
I called another.
Okay.
In the second paragraph, Jim, you said for real business use instead of for retail business use.
Oh, we shall, thank you.
Retail business.
No, thank you. Appreciate that.
Just so you know, I listen to you. I listen to you.
That's one. All right, so as corrected to say retail business and correcting the date to say the 17th, October 17, 2019.
Second. Oh, go ahead. You got the mustache.
I'll second, I guess.
I made the motion.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Ralph. Discussion? See, the agreement has to be signed by both parties, by the town and by the owners. And then I'll get back to you as far as how it falls into the timing. I'll talk with Rick, I mean with Rich. We'll do an update on it. But I'll proceed with the writing of the agreement.
Okay. So did we, did we vote?
Nope. Any other questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions tonight?
Yes, hold on a second. Did, I think I have something here. I wanted to nominate Robert Hetrick for the alternate position on planning and zoning. Or do you want to wait and do these next meetings?
I think we should wait and do these next meetings because this will be many will occur, so.
I had actually had more and I wanted to.
Yeah, I have to make sure of the openings. And I know that the different town committees have met. I don't know if the Republican Town Committee met.
Yeah, that's where I got this from.
Okay. And I don't think the Democratic Town Committee has met yet for some of these nominations. So if it's okay, can we wait?
That's fine, yeah. That was gonna.
Our vote will be for next time, Rick, which is the 18th. And maybe you could confer with Jim because I think he's working on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. The next is refunds of excess payments.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we refund the amount of $10 to Owen X. Lowprins.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $201.84 to Robert Danielwitz and Cheryl Danielwitz.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and abstentions? Motion carries.
Make a motion that we refund the amount of $132.16 to Susan M. Ives.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and abstentions? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of $411.57 to Acar Leasing Limited, LTD.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And I make a motion that we refund the amount of $390.81 to Toyota Lease Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Status reports? Are there any?
I guess I could give an update on the park. So we met last week to go through some of the items. We, trying to look through all my notes here. We did walk through the property, look at some of the items that talked about with regards to how the water's flowing around the property. So we had a discussion about drainage. While we're in the front there, we also talked about the guardrails. So they've kind of worked out an agreement. There was discussion with the DOT about how the guardrails should be placed around Route 17 and the entrance to the park. So they reached a tentative agreement and agreed how they thought it should be done. That should be consistent with what the DOT was looking for. Utility poles, and I don't remember if I mentioned it last time, the utility poles, the three new poles have been added. As far as I know, the last I knew, unless a snowplow took down the marked one for removal, is still there. And we're working out the details of putting the two poles in that have to be put in place for lighting the entrance to the park and the intersection at Route 17. They've been working on, until the snow. They were working on putting in the Bocchi Court on the, by the north hill. Obviously, that will have to wait for the water, I mean for the snow to melt so they could pick that up again. Talked about some gate placement, so the gates should be going in fairly soon. We had worked out the details about the fence going in on the property near the Piatti property boundary that we had discussed.
It's on town property, but it's right next to theirs.
So now he could work with them to get that done and bring in the gates because there's three gates that will be placed around the park to prevent vehicles from driving in when we want to close it out. We got some proposals for the fitness circuit, a proposal from the company on the fitness circuit. And we actually have to act on that pretty quickly to make sure that we get the discount that they were going to allow us. So we're working through those numbers to get that okayed. Playground is indeed done. Oh, actually, I should say the playground is done, but there is one thing going in because one, the committee wanted to have a fence, small fence, put around the smallest feature for the youngest kids. And so that is the fence that'll go in when he comes in to do the other fence work. So that's the last piece to go in in the playground. So it's all mulched. And actually, the intent was to get some shots of it in the last week, but unfortunately winds prevented drone flight that moved into snow. So hopefully, I'll be able to, be able to work together to get a video and some photos to put online. The splash pad piece that had to be replaced wasn't even replaced. So the splash pad on the outside fixtures are done. The engineering firm is working on the final details of the pump that has to be installed to connect the irrigation and the splash pad. That's something still being resolved. So they're close to resolving that item. They're working on the building right now, working hard. If you've seen it, they've sited it, or almost all of it. I think there's a little bit more to go, but it's almost completely sited. They'll start, they're doing some of the interior work and that'll be picking up as long as they're able to work through the weather. The parking lots were going to actually, the parking spaces were going to be painted this past week, but obviously that could not, this could not happen because of the snow. So I don't know, hopefully in the next week or two. Because that'll really, at that point, pretty much all outside, all the facilities will look complete when we hopefully get some drone shots of the completed park facilities. And I know we're working with the engineering firm to firm up all the details of the numbers that have been, we've been working with in terms of changes to the overall plan. So they've drafted a change order, but I hope it'll get to me tomorrow, I hope. So it's moving along. I think that they plan to finish the building sometime early January with the work they have to do inside of it. And then it'll just be the fitness circuit in the spring and any last, you know, growing grass in some of the spots it didn't take or stuff like that. Very good.
On the, did you refer to they were gonna strike the parking areas? Can they do that with cold surfaces?
I don't, I don't know. This obviously, now, who knows next week, it's gonna be in the, I don't know. It's gonna be in the 50s next week, I don't know.
Well, I'll just tell you from my experience, whenever I striped late in the year, I ended up striping again the following spring or summer. So I don't know how much we're charging you, but it might be better off to just wait and do it in the spring. You know, if it's a.
Good question to ask.
I would at least ask the question. Because.
We'll be there on Wednesday, so I'll probably message them before that. Oh, that's a good question.
No sense paying twice when you're really trying to watch your pennies there.
Any other updates? What comment? Informal discussion?
Lou and I are meeting tomorrow, meeting with a couple of people from the Connecticut River Conservancy. And they are interested in what we're, they've heard about our land purchases and things going on along their riverfront. So they wanted to come and take a little tour. So Lou and I are gonna meet them at 10 o'clock tomorrow.
I did update the application for the $750,000 cleanup grant. The state wanted us to update it. I did change some of the content, specifically indicating that the plan would be for more likely just a restaurant building, not a museum building. So that was reduced and taken out. I updated some of the other information in the application as was requested by the state. And then they responded to me yesterday or the day before that some of the legal costs they wanted to reduce. Did you see that, Tom? I sent it to you. And then I also will be reviewing this assistance agreement. And that's how we get the money. So that has to go to the Attorney General. But DECD has said that we can begin spending money even without the assistance agreement completed because the money is there. And we're also going to be getting a proposal from tie-in bond that will be a fixed price for the engineering costs and the administration of the project. I'll be sharing that with the state as well as here. And you may need, depending on our purchasing rules, you may need to do a bid waiver for that just to be on the record that you're choosing to use the same engineer to do the work.
I like the idea of a fixed cost.
So does the state.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, engineering costs can be very expensive. And if there were a new engineer to come in, they typically will, frankly, look at what was done and say they want to do their own analysis.
Correct.
And I don't think we need to spend more money on another analysis. We've already spent $200,000 on the analysis of that project. Stick with it. Gonna look at some dates, maybe in January or early February, to have some public input on the project. And I have a list of probably a dozen people that specifically said they wanted to be invited and give input to the renovation cleanup of the riverfront. So they will be specifically invited. And we've asked through our planning office that Glenn Chalder, who works for Planometrics, assist us with such an endeavor because we really want to make sure we get input from people of a broad spectrum. And he is pretty good at being able to elicit information. And there is money within the planning department to do that. So I'll get more information on that on the 18th as well, hopefully. Anything else that we want to update people on at this point? Nothing to report on those particular follow-up items. We'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Removed.
Second.
Second by Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Good job, Nate. Nice presentation. Now, we're all just trying to do our jobs. Part of the process.